Thank you, I appreciate the comments from the public record because I purchased a home this year. I went to some homes and I went down and my Realtor pointed out to me that a couple of homes were going down to the basements before we finished. His comment was to me, "You better check with the town to find out if they got a permit to do that." Because if they didn't, you might have to tear it all apart and start fresh. And so I called and it was public record and was told that it was not done by a permit. The house I bought was done by a permit. So I think it's due diligence on the property buyer to try to figure out something looks amiss here when you're walking around the back of the house. You've got to make some comments and make some inquiries and say, "You know, something just doesn't look right here. If we want to try to do this, we need to find out if we can do it before you actually purchase the property." So I guess, do we have any letters or emails? I'll open it up to the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to address this matter? Seeing none opposed to public hearing. You have a pretty definitive without us voting. Do you want us to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. We're going through. Thank you. The landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted. All in favor?
One.
Opposed? There's a voting line. Do you not accept a one? Landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless variance is granted. We're doing the final vote.
Okay.
Not in favor?
I won't change my vote.
Okay. So it's unanimous, says no. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. All in favor?
Mr. Sheriff, do we need to go over?
Mr. Longstaff, so we should probably just vote on it. I asked you and we'll just do the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Grading of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. All in favor? In favor? The hardship is not the result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Do you have a motion to deny? Question two.
Application is presented.
Do you have a second?
Yes, you may continue.
I'll say. All in favor of the motion is presented. Opposed? Unanimous. We'll resume the meeting at this point. Thank you, sorry for the brief delay. Appeal number 2633, practical difficulty request by Jeremy and Karen Groddin, 117 Holmes Road, assessor map R31, parcel 14. Could you please introduce yourself and your address, please?
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Groddin, owner of the house at 117 Holmes Road, Scarborough.
Mr. Longstaff, can you give us some information on this and staff comment?
Okay, the appellant's filed an application for practical difficulty variance appeal. As he said, 117 Holmes Road. The appellant has not demonstrated standing with his application. However, I checked the assessor's records and he is the owner of records, so I can vouch for him having standing to applaud. The appellant is proposing to, I'm sorry, the existing dwelling is a non-conforming existing dwelling with regard to front yard setbacks. It's located about 30 feet from the front property line. The parcel is not in a special flood hazard area or shoreline overlay zone, so he is eligible for a practical difficulty variance appeal. He's proposing to build a 16 by 22 foot two-story addition on the west side of the existing dwelling, about 32 feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback in the RF zone is 50 feet. The appellant requests an 18-foot variance.
Thank you. No other staff comments? Could you just briefly give us a overview of what you're looking to do and then we'll go into questions. You can just read your answers in.
Sure. Basically, what I would like to do is add an addition under the house. It's Washington side, Brian said. It's happened since I owned the house since I was 24, bought it in 2002. Over a period of time, I've done improvements to the house to make it a home. You know, I bought a house. I've been in front of the zoning board many times. The first time being the farmers porch. That was the hardest one to get through. Now, my wife and I have a family. You know, my daughter is in third grade, family's getting bigger. I own a fairly small house. I don't want to move from where we're at. I like our location, love the yard. It's the neighborhood I grew up in, Chicago's marked around. My parents still live there. Would like to be able to make a modest improvement to the house. I don't find it to be over the top or anything unreasonable. I'd like to have the house be a little bit more up to date with some of the other current houses in the area that I currently live in. Just to also note, if you look at the proposed addition, you'll see the farmers porch is in the picture. I dug my first time going in front of the zoning board of appeals to get the farmers porch approved, which it was. I also want you to see that I proposed to keep the front of the addition two feet behind the existing front of the wall of the house. I have plenty of side setback. I'm not looking to approach any further to the front than what's already there, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll go down with your questions. The need of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. You can just read in your answers if you have.
Yeah, due to the fact that the setback requirement has changed since the house was built in 1961, the proposed addition will not be setbacks. The addition we would like to build will actually set in two feet from the front of our house, so will not be altering our current setback.
Thank you. Grading of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of the property's properties?
No, if anything, it would increase the value of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Three, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
No, the request is due to the zoning changes made by the town since the house was built in 1961. The zoning has changed.
Thank you. No feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance?
Due to the circumstances, my driveway is on the eastly side. There's a mudroom that I was approved to build roughly 10 years ago. The garage is on the eastly side. Directly behind my house is where my septic tank is. I spoke to Brian about putting the paperwork for this meeting. He'd seen in the record that people I bought the house from had to replace the septic tank. It was a steel tank that needed to be replaced before they sold the house. There was a proposed new change to a raised bed leach field in the very way back corner, which I guess is still recorded in the town hall, but that was not needed to be done. It did pass the perk test. They were able to hook the concrete tank to the existing leach field. So I know Brian and I talked about that. I think he made a note about that, but there's no need for that to be part of this discussion. But I can't go off the back of my house because that's exactly where my septic tank is. There is a picture there that Brian could pull up off the town map. You'll see it's highlighted in red right behind the house. That's where my septic tank is and the leach field follows directly behind.
Grading of the variance will not result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties will result in. Number five.
Yeah. All of the other houses in the neighborhood were built at the same time, so everybody in the neighborhood is non-conforming, so it's not going to change the fact that the house is not conforming. It's allowing something reasonable to be built and not affect my front setback anymore.
Grading the variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment?
No changes to the environmental occur, so.
I guess one question I had when I was looking at this initially, did you anticipate, because as you said, you've been in for several times, did you anticipate any of these being like just one possible?
If I had the financial wherewithal to say, you know, when I was 24, I want to have a house that looks just like this, I want to have a farmers porch and a small mudroom and have a family, I would say, just let's get this all done once and for all. Unfortunately, that's not the way it works for me. I pay as I go, I work hard, work hard here in town, and I'd like to be able to continue to work hard on my house. Most of the I do is, you know, myself, obviously I have professionals that will help with the construction part of it, but it was not a situation where I could say, "Hey, I want to do all these things." You know, you have six months to start and you have to finish most of the time, I think, on a building permit. I would not, that would not ever happen, so. And don't take that sarcastically either.
Property is not located in hole or park within the shoreline zone as defined in 38 MRSA 435 or flood hazard zone as defined in the town of Scarborough's flood plan management ordinance.
No, they're more of.
Questions from the board, side of the displays?
I really don't have any questions. The one thing that we were talking about was the septic tank and the possibility of that being in the back corner of the property, but you clarified that, so basically, there's really no other place that you can really expand. So I really don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have any comments.
Can make comments on any of these.
The toughest question of these kind of appeals for me is that there are no other feasible alternatives. So I'm going to ask some questions and it's going to help me paint a picture as to whether you've done your due diligence to make sure you've covered everything and reviewed everything possible.
Sure.
There's an area between the septic, and the septic field's in red on the aerial view, correct?
Correct, yes.
There's an area between the septic field and the garage, which is to the right in this view. And I don't know what that dimension is, but let's say it's 15 feet, something like that. And then it goes back towards what looks to be a round pool in the plan view. Did you consider trying to develop in that area so that you didn't have to move the septic, but you had some room?
The logistics of trying to get in behind the back of the house there would be very tough. If you're looking down the house, the right-hand side, close to the garage, is a dining room kitchen. Bathroom's in the middle of the back, and then there's a living, a small living room on the Washington side. If we were to put an addition on the back, then to have a living room go up through the kitchen, it'd be completely destroying my kitchen. I've got no other spot, like my sinks on the back wall at the back window looking out, so it would completely be, in my opinion, unfeasible.
And the bathroom's in border that in the.
Yeah, I've got my kitchen and I've got my bathroom and then the current living room. What I'd like to have, it'd be a full foundation, storage underneath, living room and a bedroom just for my daughter.
And that would create, would you say that that would be an oval-shaped room that we'd create back there if you did that, or would that be an odd-shaped?
It'd be very odd-shaped room. The current house is daylight basement in the back, so almost three stories in the back. I went in front of the zoning board of appeals to change the pitch of the roof of my garage from a 612 pitch to a 1012 pitch, put trusses up there. So trying to tie in the roof of the garage and trying to tie in the roof of the addition with what's already there, it'd just be, I think, a logistical nightmare. And like I said, trying to completely rehab my kitchen when it's not really necessary. If I go off the west of the end of the house, it would be a lot easier. I plan on having the roofs stepped out from the existing roofs so they can be tied in properly for, you know, flushing water issues. I don't want to have the front of the house match and the back of the house to match because this is, you know, trying to add on to a house 50-some-odd years later, it's almost impossible, so I'd like to have it just be on the other, on the Washington side of the house.
Okay, what about if you were attempt to go and I'm facing from the front, the back right-hand corner of the home, but if you tried to connect to the garage and use the space over the garage, would that be an option for you?
Not really. If you look, I got approval for a small mudroom on the back of the basement. There was not a full cellar door, so I built a small mudroom that's there, so I'd be destroying that as well. I'd rather leave that intact. I'd rather leave my garage separate and just go off the end of the house. I think it'd be the simplest, simplest way.
Okay, and going from the right side of the house towards the garage and that space right to the front of the garage, is that feasible or an option?
That's my driveway.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Losing driveway, is that an option or?
I don't lose my driveway, no. No, I mean, I've got two garage doors there and I'd be obviously blocking one of those. And then, you know, trying to go off that side of the house, there's already a mudroom that I built, I'd destroy that, tie it up garage. The garage isn't on a full, it's on a slab, so it would be, I would not think that would be the most feasible way to put an addition in my house, so.
And my last question would be, would the leach field right off the back of the home, have you considered moving that backwards then to create a little bit of space on the backside of the home and then maybe extending the back three stories or two and a half stories backwards?
The septic tank is extremely deep in the ground up back there. Going that route would be destroying the entire backyard that I've got, and then we'd probably run into an issue of damaging the current leach field, which would turn into having to have a ready spent weight at that corner. There'd be a lot more expense, I think.
Do you have an idea for what that expense is?
It'd be probably $20,000.
All right, that answers my questions.
Brian, did you receive any letters or emails on this? I'm just saying that, you know, the addition looks like it's very close to the neighbors and to their driveway. Did you speak to them? I know they received notice.
That's his problem.
Is that?
Those are all the laws, Brian.
Those are my, that's my lower driveway.
Oh.
Yeah, my house, I have a fairly big lot, but my house is, everything's on the southeast corner of the property. So I went up, I dropped it, paved the garage. The house, the house is 24 by 32. It's a very modest cave in my opinion. It's not a big house. I grew up in this town, and when I grew up in this town, every household was pretty modest, but there's a lot of bigger houses now. I don't really want to move. I love the property I've got, you know. I've got a lot of blood, sweat and tears there, and I just like to simply improve on what I've got. So that lower driveway is mine as well, and there's two small sheds that I were able to place there by permit of the town.
But they're two separate properties, is that true?
No, it's all one property, yeah. My property line is 150 feet on the front edge, 30 feet deep.
The only questions I had coming into this have been answered already, just with regard to the septic tanks and whether or not it's actually there. It's clearly there, you're stating that it's currently working and it's fine, then I have no further questions.
What I was getting at when I asked you the question about coming before us for all at once brings me to the no other feasible alternative, but it also brings me to, where was it here? Number three, the practical difficulty is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner. Some of the things you've added on or done are some of the things that you're saying that you don't want to lose. But that kind of brings me back to that because it was actually something that you did that now you don't want to lose if we were, if you were able to just do this without coming before us.
From the standpoint of every time I've done anything at the house in the past 15 years, I've gone in front of the zoning board of appeals, I think this is number five. I wish I had, like I said, you know, before, I wish I could have looked and said, "I want to do all these things," and be able to get one approval from the zoning board of appeals. That's not the way it works. There is a substantial amount of money invested in coming to the door each time. So the end of the world, huge amount of money, but it's still, you know, a fairly good amount. So for all the steps I've taken to try to do it the right way and have in the past been approved by the zoning board for these requests, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to lose those.
Right, and it's, that's my problem with those. Number two is bringing me to having the three, that there would have been a feasible alternative, but you did do the other action, so that's what I'm struggling with for these here when I look at this. Okay, great, thank you for all your information.
Thank you.
Second, no letters, great news. Open up to the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this? Seeing none, opposed to public hearing. Open it up to the board for any additional comments, or we can go down to the questions and go and finding some facts and conclusions. On one, the need of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood?
Definitely.
Yes, I would agree. The property was built in 1961. I'm sure the roads are a lot narrower than.
It's easier for her to choose anything to say. Oh, she's doing the notes. Sorry.
I agree the applicant was right.
I agree with board.
I would agree as well. I don't think there's anything further that you've already told us about the property. I mean, you've got a deeper property, but it all seems to sit on that one frontal portion, so it is definitely the conditions of the neighborhood and circumstances of the property. The grading of the variance will not produce an.
All in favor of one being met? Unanimous. Two, the grading of the variance will not produce an desirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of a lot of properties.
According to the applicant, all homes in the area are out of conformance anyway, so this isn't going to change it.
I agree, the applicant is shown that it will not create an undesirable change in character.
No, I don't think there'll be any change, but I think it'll just add value to the property and the property surrounding it.
I agree, that's usually what I kind of lay my hat on is any additions or improvements you make always, you know, raises everybody up around you. Also, with Holmes Road there, a lot of houses are close to the roads, and it's not something that will stick out of place. Thank you.
Yes, I don't think that this is going to produce an undesirable change, but you say that most of the properties are pretty much non-conforming. I don't know if you confirm that or deny that, but it will accept your information that you've given us on it, but you have anything to comment on Mr. Longstaff, but most of them are.
Certainly not uncommon in that stretch of Holmes Road to see houses with similar setbacks. The lots houses are generally big enough, but as you can see on Mr. Longstaff's site plan, the hashed line or the dashed line up in the upper left-hand corner is the buildable envelope on his lots. There's literally none of his house or a very small part of his house. Even in the buildable envelopes that you, you know, talk about feasibility, I mean, is it feasible to connect by one corner a part of the house to put back in the buildable envelope? And is that going to look like it's in character with the neighborhood, I think is the question you have to ask, at least in my mind.
All in favor of two being met? Unanimous. Three, the practical difficulty is not the result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
I agree with you. I agree, unless you believe that having children is an unrealistic expectation of a homeowner, so you don't have 18 kids, so I think you bought the right size home and just expanding it to meet family's needs, so I don't think, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Thank you.
I agree with board.
Yep, applicant's very aware and is very prepared, well prepared for questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, on this one, like I said, I think it is on one vote, but I think it was a result of what the other things you were doing, you did, you stated to us that you had to do so many that you went along and everything, but I just would say that this would not be something that I would consider. I think it would not, would be enough for me. We'll vote on that. All in favor of three being met? Four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance?
I agree with his answer. I believe the applicant is showing due diligence in reviewing all the options that he had for design and agree that he is, this is the most feasible alternative.
I agree, I think you've done a good job at demonstrating this is what you got.
Thank you.
Yep, the applicant has shown that he can't build on the plan view east side of the building in front of his garage. He can't go back behind his house because the septic tank is there. And if you were, like Mr. Longstaff mentioned, tried to build off into the buildable envelope, you then would not be, you would be altering the character of the neighborhood of houses because you'd have a 45-degree angle addition of your home, so.
It'd be a long hallway off the back.
It's a very, very long hallway indeed.
No, but this is one that I always say no on, but based upon the fact that I said no on three kind of leads me to four being, there is no feasible alternative because of what you've done. At this point, there is no other feasible alternative that you're trying to do in my mind based upon that fact, so I would be fine with that. All in favor of four? Unanimous. Five, the grading of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties.
Seeing all the other properties in the area are non-conforming, this isn't going to make any changes to anything, so I agree with his answer.
I believe that if he changed and went to a different alternative, that it would be less in compliance with what is today, so unless he did it, what he could do is minimize the impact to side, front and rear setbacks.
Mr. Loizel pretty much sounded out there.
I agree, and the key word being, you know, minimizing the non-conformance. I mean, you indicate that the front of your house is not going to be two feet back from the road to try to, you know, accommodate as best as you can, so.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd say on this one, I think that you've demonstrated that the properties are non-conformance, like I said, I can verify that, that's based on what you're telling us, and Mr. Longstaff's also given us information on that, so based upon his information that he gave us about the property and what you've given us and just knowing the area and looking at it, I think that is correct. All in favor of five being met? Unanimous. Six, the grading of the variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment?
I agree.
I trust the applicant, but there will be no adverse effects.
I agree.
I agree, you think the adverse effects, maybe if you were doing something else and you had to move that leach field or you had to move that septic system, you may have some adverse effects on the environment based on doing that after trying to fix it.
Yeah, I completely agree. I think that's, that'd be a very huge undertaking to move the septic system.
All in favor of six being met? Unanimous. Seven, the property is not located in hole or park within the shoreline areas defined in 38 MRSA 435 or flood hazard zone is defined in the town of Scarborough's flood plan management ordinance. I don't know if we, don't have a feeling. That's pretty self-explanatory. All, yeah, all in favor of seven being met? We have a motion on the appeal number 2633. A move to approve appeal.
Remember with the. Remember with the practical difficulty, you also have to make a finding on the strict application of the dimensional standards in the ordinance of the property for which variance is sought, but both preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone and which is located and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant.
Thank you. I'm going to get fired from my job. Okay, so the dimensional standards, those provisions of the ordinance which relate to the lot area, lot coverage, drainage and setback requirements, the case of strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance of the property for which a variance is sought, will both preclude a use of the property in which the permitted, is permitted in the zone and which it is located and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant.
I, excuse me, I agree. Moving the septic system would have a major impact to the cost, and I say your estimate was probably below from what I'm foreseeing, so I agree.
I agree.
In addition to the septic, other options we explore, going over to the driveway, destroying the mudroom on the backside of the house, if you did with the septic tank, you're removing all the plumbing for the kitchen fixtures and the lavatories and all that. So yeah, it's certainly a very severe economic injury.
Let's just simply add, Mr. Chairman, if you, again, if you look at the site plan with the buildable envelope, he'd still probably have to come back for a variance, he would put an addition on the back of the structure.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I think they've demonstrated based upon the septic system as to what you'd have to, that incur an additional cost, and what you'd have to incur additional cost for moving things and moving things that have been built to other areas or demo, and I would agree with that. All in favor of B, one and two? Genomics.
Motion to.
Motion.
Approve the appeal as presented.
Thank you. All in favor of appeal number 2633 is presented? Four? One person.
Thank you.
Okay, appeal number 2634, special exception request by Kenneth Beasley, 324 Born Road, assessment to downtown 34, parcel 4C. Could you please introduce yourself and your address, please?
Ken Beasley, 324 Born Road.
Thank you, Mr. Longstaff. Could you give us a synopsis of this and staff comments, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, this is, as the applicant said, is Kenneth Beasley, 324 Born Road, the RF zone. This is a single-family dwelling lot. The lots and structures are conforming to the space development standards of the district. The applicant seeks to create a home occupation and is therefore applying for special exception permit per section 4I Scarborough zoning ordinance. And the nature of the proposed home occupation is to operate a dealership for sunspace sunrooms, which requires a display and showroom for allowing residential building products. To remind the board, the section 4I3, the board appeals, shall be entered here to approve with modifications or conditions, or disapprove of all applications for special exception permits. The board may approve a special exception permit only for a use which is specifically designated by this ordinance as a special exception in the district where the use will be located. Home occupations are one such use. As far as staff comments, the applicant has a lot of activity going on at his lot. He has expressed the desire to organize the lot in a little bit different fashion and take care of some of the activities and meeting things up in order to establish some home occupation. The site plan may need a little bit of explanation, clarity for the board at the board's discretion.
Thank you. Please just present what you're looking to.
Okay, I've been a building model for 40 years, and I took on sunspace about three years ago. Now the requirements become, they call the great dealer, is I'm supposed to have some displays and have a showroom that customers can come to. I looked around for real estate to lease, rent, buy, and a lot of the stuff's been taken up by the growers. What was left is, was out of my reach. The last one I looked at, probably wanted $600,000 for the project. One side I have a veterinary hospital, the other side I have golf courses. What I propose on doing is, because I am downsizing from being a modeling, remove the excess materials, equipment that I won't be using anymore from the site, clean up the site, put a fence up to put my sawmill behind the fence. I talked to a landscaper about landscaping around it to make it an attractive place to have people come in. It would be nice to have a sign, too. But basically what I want to do is I just, I want to clean it up in the front half of the property. I'm not looking at any great traffic to it. If I start getting the volume that can't handle it, I'm going to be looking for another site.
Great. We'll go down through the questions. Can you just, in fact, answer your answers that you presented there? The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unfavorable conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
We're not doing any manufacturing. We're not adding any plumbing fixtures at all.
Thank you. B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when headed to existing imperceivable traffic on its vicinity?
It's 114. There's a lot of traffic on 114. I don't foresee the adding to it.
Do you, based upon that, do you have a turnaround to the property or the moving? So you're a busy, you're a busy one.
I have ample parking, and I have a place to turn around on Sunday, yes.
Thank you. C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree of ignitable fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood?
As I stated, I've got a veterinary hospital on one side of me, and I've got a golf course on the other, and I've got a development going in across the golf course.
D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies?
There again, it's just displays. We're not doing any work on site.
Do you have a couple of paths out there now by the road?
I have a display that is 50 feet back, and I have another display. I have three actual displays on property at the moment.
They're mostly up by the road, aren't they?
Uh, no.
Okay, so I know I've driven by it a couple times, there's some that are fairly close.
Yeah.
E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development?
So we're not going to really add anything more there. We're just going to rearrange or reconfigure what we have.
Thank you. F, if located in a shoreline zone as depicted on the town of Scarborough's official shoreline zoning map, the proposed use will comply with all the requirements of the town of Scarborough's shoreline zoning ordinance?
We're not, we're not shoreline.
Thank you. The applicant has sufficient money, title, and interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry on the proposed use?
We bought the property in 99, so we own the property. We're a part of equity here.
And that's part of your package as well, with your tax bill? No, the deed in there is one. The tax bill is ours, isn't it? Yes. The applicant has technical financial ability to meet the standards of the section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the board of appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section.
There again, been contract for 40 years. I don't think you can tell me that that can't get done.
Okay, thank you. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operations?
It's based on daylight hours, and there's no noise because there's no work going on.
By daylight hours, can you elaborate on that?
Probably, I mean, no one's going to, going to visit it between, I'd say between eight and six.
Okay, thank you. We need to go through the questions now as well, or we can take these separately? Home occupations? Yes?
How many businesses are you running from your home currently?
Just one.
Just one? Which one is that?
My modeling contractor.
The sunrise home?
You're right.
Okay, thank you. Was that something that you went forward to get?
No, because I, you know, I never have, I don't have a dedicated space for sunrise, and I don't have any signage, so I didn't try for a home occupation because none of the work is done on site.
Right. Okay, I guess that's allowed, right? As long as you don't have signs and.
Okay, win that one.
Okay.
Okay, we do need to go to the performance standards for home occupations as well, which you don't probably have asked, so you can just answer the questions if you could.
Okay.
The occupation of profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within any building necessary there to.
So I'll have, I have to do the displays, and what I'm proposing, I think, I left out that was to utilize this existing greenhouse slab to put the showroom there, to construct a building for the showroom there.
How big is the slab?
The slab is about 380, it's 16 by 24, so it's 386 square feet.
Thank you. The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Yeah, there's separate locations.
No more than one person who is non-resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation.
That's correct.
Exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions under section 12 sign regulations subsection E. So you asked about a sign?
Yeah.
That addresses.
It's like two foot by three foot.
There shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building, except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to the storage of lobster traps, which you don't have.
What's that?
You don't have any lobster traps?
No. No, this is one of the things I don't have.
No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare?
No.
Do you have a sawmill there?
I do.
That would be addressing any of those?
The sawmill's a hobby. The sawmill's not, it's not used all the time.
So it's not in relation to this business at all?
Not at all.
The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood?
I don't foresee low traffic.
Thank you. In addition, the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and the vehicles of the maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak operation hours. How many people do you think would be there at any given time?
One couple and myself.
The home occupation may utilize not more than 20% of the dwelling unit floor area provided, that for the purposes of this calculation, unfinished basement and attic spaces are not included.
So we're not, we're not using any pine out there, Molly?
Okay. Space within accessory building totaling not more than 1,000 square feet. For area.
So the space that I want to use is under 400 square feet.
Does that include displays?
No, I'm sorry. No, it doesn't include displays.
How much total square feet?
Displays are 12 by 14.
And there's?
Yes.
Just two?
Yes.
Home occupations may include retail sales subject to the following limitations: total area devoted to the retail sales is limited to 400 square feet and must be fully enclosed within a building.
So that's what I'm proposing, that to use a slab the greenhouses on for that building for that purpose?
Sale of products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises, seafood caught or harvested off the premises by the person who resides in the dwelling unit, or by the one employee permitted under paragraph three above. So are you producing the products and assembling them there?
No. Products are actually made in Canada, shipped today, and then they're put together at the customer's house.
So everything's assembled offsite at the customer's house? So nothing's assembled on property, you know?
Correct.
Anything processed on property?
No.
Storage before installation?
I'm sorry, anything?
Storage before installation? From the customer's site, you do a direct ship to them, or does it come to your property first, except a week before?
It comes to me. So what I've rearranged in the existing buildings, I have to accommodate that.
None of the existing buildings are going to be in direct relation to this business?
No.
Sawmill or any other buildings that are on premises aren't going to be supporting this business?
Correct.
You're not a fisherman or lobster, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, when you do a rest eleven, you're not doing motor vehicle repairs or towing?
Correct.
I think we've covered everything. There's no amount of process. Okay, so we have questions at the board? Anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask of you?
I'm having difficulty understanding exactly, exactly where everything is going to be, what this existing building is.
Basically, but basically, in the front of my property, where my driveway is, approximately 200 feet back from the edge of the road, there's a section there right now where I've got logs and sawmill, and I've got some other construction material there that I'm moving. I'm going to clean all that up and do some landscaping, and everything will be right down in that first 200 feet of my property.
What is the existing building?
Uh, there's a, there's a greenhouse there. I moved the greenhouse out back behind the house.
And then you're going to build another building on the foundation of the existing building?
On the, on the greenhouse slab, yes.
What's going to be in that building?
That would be the showroom. That would be the customers' committee, sit down, and we'll, we can talk about price and show of products, et cetera.
But then you also have displays up there.
Correct. I have, I have two displays that I, that I take to different fairs or shows, like I'll be in the expo this weekend. So I have to, they're mobile, they're, they're mobile displays that travel to different locations.
12 by 14 is important?
Yes. Those are private fair of the year.
I just had a couple, so I'm just going to, sorry, I reckon that. Just asking one, I don't. I know, I know, it's just a question. Not the findings. You said you've got those mobile units they've taken to private, are those on wheels? Are those stationary? Are they kept on trailers? How are those kept right now?
I have one trailer that I transport along.
But how are they stored on location right now?
On the ground.
Okay, so they're not kept on a trail?
Correct.
They're kept on the ground?
Correct.
What, you mentioned logs. What's going on with the logs? Are those trees you cut down? Are those logs that you've kind of dropped off at the property?
I don't, I don't have a boat, I don't have a camp. I have a sawmill. That's my hobby, so all those logs will be cleaned up and everything will be behind the fence.
But where do the logs come from? Are they in, have they stayed off your property, or are they coming?
No, I actually, I actually bought that.
Okay, so you're having product delivered that you.
I, I had those delivered.
Running through your sawmill?
Yes.
And the greenhouse, that's not going to be anything sold out of that or anything?
No, nothing.
Strictly for.
I haven't sold anything out of the greenhouse.
Do you have any putting that out back, you said?
Correct.
When you landed the two displays, can you plant a light in them, power to them?
No.
Okay. So you're just walking during the day, you gradual light?
Correct.
And you said that you might have one couple come over and take a look. What is the density of visits? Do you believe it might be one or two couples a night?
I don't see that. Out of the polar flower show, I spoke to many different people, but I think I've had three people since then come over to display.
And where do you think they're going to park? When you go to the back of the property, do you go back to?
No, way up, way up front, there's a, there's a gravel pad where all the, we're on the, we're on the larger stack right now.
Okay, so back on that greenhouse slab that's out back behind the home?
No, it's just the, the greenhouse is in, out front by the, by the road.
Okay.
The greenhouse is going to be moved to behind the house.
Okay, so you're going to keep everybody out front?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
So forgive me if this is an answer already, I'm just trying to grasp, grab everything on it. So the existing greenhouse here, this is eighteen by thirty-eight approximately. That's going to be the location of the new showroom?
Correct.
Okay, and then adjacent to it, you have two twelve by fourteen displays?
Correct.
Okay, and those will be the, I guess, the only buildings there for the home occupation?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have right now. And what was the total square footage that needs to be under?
It's one thousand.
Thousand, can we?
Square, square footage, it's one accessory. And four hundred feet.
Thousand square feet is what it says for a space with an accessory building not more than one thousand square feet of floor area. If you're doing retail sales, which I would assume would be the sales office part of your building, it's limited to four hundred square feet. That's out that one thousand, it can be four hundred square feet. So if there's two twelve by twelves, that's three hundred and thirty-six square feet, if my math is right.
I think we just add about the dimensions, it came as six eighty-four.
Okay. Just one more thing. I don't know if the board. I'm kind of curious as to, to the number five of the home occupations where it says there should be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials. Does the board consider the display units as not displays?
Well, that, yeah, that's, that sounds like, we, we want to address the six hundred and eighty-four square feet. Right now, that's what we're looking at. That's what you have looking at.
What size building is going on the pad? The pad's eighteen by thirty-eight, is that correct?
Right, the, the showroom would be on the fourteen by eighteen, and then there'd be an office behind that, which is on the sixteen by twenty-four. So the display, the showroom would be less than four hundred, it's two hundred and fifty-six square feet, I think.
They're, they're separate? They're not connected?
No, they aren't. It's all one big slab.
Are they going to be connected when you?
They will be connected, yes.
So they're going to be open?
The display, the, the showroom will be up behind there, but, but the office back will be on the same slab.
But they're going to be connected, so we're looking at it for a whole square?
Right.
So we're looking at it more like six thirty-six?
Correct.
And I just, I just had a question, because it seems like you've got a couple occupations on it. Did we have anything before this that had a home occupations there, or was it not required before?
There was no home occupation permit.
There was no home occupation permit before, but it's not like a number of contractors who operate on their truck and live at home and keep materials there is a violation of this question, but. The sunrooms, where they're not affixed to the ground, and there was no signage, couldn't, couldn't, technically couldn't tell they were for sale, although somebody told me if you put anything in your front yard on a trailer, it's for sale. Hit me. I don't know if that's true. I don't know if that's true or not. I had somebody take my canoe once and thought it was, thought it was for free. So I don't, I don't know. It's a, it's a question, but there, there was no home occupation permit there. He's coming in to apply for that now, so. I, I don't know what else to say, but that.
Mr. Chair, typical standard practice, we normally have a drawing that has things marked on it so we can see what's going in. I don't feel like we have that right now. Can we either create that document here or do we have to have him come back and bring it?
Just a form piazza.
Okay.
Anybody else have that same?
I mean, it's a little bit, and I apologize, but it's a little bit unclear to me where the final situation of everything's going to be going there on the drawing, and I would like to see this more finalized plan of exactly where everything's going with square footages listed out.
Yeah, I think when, when we have things like this, what we like to see is pictures and some more defined drawings and.
I have one, it's what he, I hear it's one of the.
Well, we're looking for the property and what it's going to look like. Like if you can give us some type of idea of what we're looking at. We don't want to just approve something and not know what we're approving, which right now, we don't really know. There's so many moving parts on this property that you've got five or six different things, and it's hard to really tell what we're looking at because it's not clearly defined. I mean, we can, we can continue or? What's your thought about this?
If the applicant is open to it, would you consider coming back to us with information that shows exactly?
Well, part, part of the problem right now is taking a picture right now, went to a justice because I kind of torn things apart trying to put things back together. And I still have to finish cleaning up the logs and put a fence up and move stuff around. So what you saw now would.
But is there a more defined plan even?
Yeah, can you clearly mark this out to scale? Because that's really what. Could you clearly mark your thoughts out to scale so we can actually tell exactly what you're doing? Because in good faith, we can't approve something without knowing what it is, and until we see it on paper to scale, then it's just guesswork.
That is not the scale.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's, it needs to be well defined so we know where the new buildings are going to be located, their shape, their position. And right now, it's, it's basically a little sketchy, and it really needs to be, not that it has to be an engineer drawing, but if it was drawn up to scale, hard lines, so it's clear as to where all the buildings are, where everything's going to sit, that certainly would help us.
So if I, if I drew a scale of one fourteen and this, this front half of the property showing where the displays would be and the showroom would be, that's what you're looking for?
Correct, and where people might park.
You don't need the whole property?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Well, it's affected by what you want to do with this development?
Yep.
Yep, I have a question down here.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of actually having you come back with a scale drawing draft of what you're intending to do and maybe something that indicates, you know, what are, what are part of the properties that are fixed to land versus what are just the free-floating displays that you're going to have, you know, what things are changing about the property. Perhaps a little bit, you know, from my perspective, a little bit of what exists now that you're removing versus, you know, so what the, what the look is now versus what it will be, to see the, the actual change.
I think I myself would like to see more as well. I mean, I'd like to have more information on the logs. I mean, generally, when you're having logs like that on your property for your sawmill, it's either an occupation if you're having dropped there, or you can harvest your own land and use your own trees and things like that. But we really need to see specifically what you're going to be doing with what you're asking us for here, and then some other things with the property that we just can clean up. So then we make sure we've got this all squared away for you, so we make sure we know exactly what we're looking at, because you've got a lot of moving parts over there right now. I mean, we can continue and go down through all the questions for you, or we can table it. I mean, if we get to the point where we deny it, we'd have to wait one year to come back. If you wanted to table it, come back with more information, we can certainly do that. We can hear it. It would be the first appeal the next month, is that correct? Yeah, if you wanted to come back next month, it would be the first appeal we hear, so you wouldn't be having to wait.
So I, I guess it'd be my best interest to table it and do a more scale of what sunspace is taking up of the property, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to see, my own personal side, I'd like to see what's going on with the other stuff too. That's just my own personal.
What other stuff we're talking about?
Oh, like the loggings?
Yeah, I think the other, the other questions in my mind are regarding the, the home-based business aspect of this or, or the, which, just seeing how, how those questions come into play and having a little bit more specific information right in front of us that we could look at that would explain which, you know, what the, what the businesses are that are going on with the property.
Maybe explain that a little bit better than I may have about the logs. I don't know. Is it, is it specific that it has to be, if you've got logs in the property and you're using sawmill for things, you're going to be using your own trees and land to be doing that?
Yeah, commercial, I mean, under commercial activity. Sorry?
Under commercial activity, commercial forestry, he's saying it's, it's, it's a hobby, so it's a little bit different. If he's not selling logs for money, then it's a hobby versus commercial activity. I think what wasn't clear, and Ken may be able to, and I think he has alluded to the fact that it's a hobby, you're not selling logs, you're not selling lumber for people for money.
No.
So it's not commercial? Yeah, I mean, it's not a commercial sawmill. You, it's an allowed use in the RF. A commercial sawmill is an allowed use in the RF as an accessory use, or not, even, even as a present use, it's allowed. However, you're supposed to be selling up logs that you take off your property for commercial. If it's, if it's a hobby and people are bringing logs to you and you're sawing it because you like to, you like the noise, you like the sawdust, and when you use the equipment, that's, like I say, some people play golf, you like to saw logs, so it needs to his own. I, I don't think that that necessarily then violates that condition because he's not making money from doing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if I could just add.
Along with that, what, what you do with your logs, how you store them, how you stack them, it's not pertinent to this application. This is about this particular property for these displays and this, what do you call it? It's an existing building, but your showroom or whatever you're going to call it, it really is around that layout. So if you could focus on this front portion of the property where that existing building is to the road and scale that in and show dimensions to the property lines, that would be really beneficial. And again, look, I think we need to keep focused on what's pertinent to this application, not that you have fifteen other businesses that's not, you're not applying for those now. It doesn't, in my opinion, apply to this application. So let's keep it just to the, those specific items. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, I think first, I was, I was answering his, his question about whether commercials, sawmills are a thing, and I was just describing that. It wasn't a, it wasn't pointed at, you know, anything to do with this application. It was simply just a question. The other thing, I think, and as far as the activity, only as much as it may impact how people are getting in and out of the property, if you've got a lot of other stuff going on and isn't safe access and that kind of thing, I agree, I a hundred percent agree that you really need to look at this application and this, this proposal, but I think, given the, given the amount of activity on that, it's still a concern. If you can certainly describe how that's all going to work together, I think that's not a problem.
So I think I heard you say that you'd like to table it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, your motion to table, you can.
Move to table.
Second. All in favor of table? Ms. Anderson?
Well, one month would be enough to time for you to come back.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we offer up the planning department if he needs some help with what to document for us? I would think Mr. Allen Staff is willing to help you in what we're, we would need to make a decision.
Does that sound possible? Does that sound acceptable?
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
In your packets, I think everybody got, hopefully everybody got this. I should be going to ask for it. If it includes each character based zoning districts. Does everyone have that? It's like this right here? Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't get asked this. Oh, that's true. So I thought you had questions about the draft, or we have some questions and concerns about that. Would you like to elaborate on those?
It was more around the thought process. I know that in the history of us, I've been involved in a couple of cases that have gone to court, and my question is, is if we wait and document what comes from that meeting, and we don't use the videotape as the prima facie evidence, prima facie evidence, my fear is that we're going to do our best to capture the information or the thought behind it in written form, but we may not be able to capture all of it. And I think it's been proven in a couple of cases that have gone to legal review, that they actually go to the videotape, and that is the document that they rely on to find out what was said and what the intent behind that was. And I remember some of the writings coming back from the judge in having us re-review, that he kept going back to the video, not to written form. So my fear is if we're relying on the written form and waiting to sign on that, that it kind of takes away the value of the video. And I think the judges are going to more rely on the video than they are the written form. So the only fear for me is waiting and documenting. It puts a lot of onus on the planning department to really get the thought behind it, not just what was verbally said. You've got to get the intent behind it. So my fear of waiting is that we'll lose that intent, and if it ever goes to legal judgment, then that written document will be the primary document, and we might not capture it all. So that was really my thought on it, like wanting to comment.
Me first. I have the mic. There was one, I will say, there was one instance earlier this year where you came back on, Rick, where there was a court judgment that came back to us, and they didn't, they based it solely on the written information that was provided to them. They didn't watch the video.
The one case I'm referring to was the Scarborough Beach extension. Remember when they looked at expanding at that? Remember the judge coming back and saying, I looked at the video and heard the people talking, because there were tons of people from the audience that had input, and they went back to that video and looked.
Judge watched the seven hours?
It was huge, so.
I mean, I can, I can see with like something that to scale, a judge probably would spend the time to do it from the past, or as that we, that I've seen with that one that came back, it was, it was just a limited group of people involved, and the judge didn't review the video with audio or any of that. Based it, he or she bases solely on the written information that was provided, if I recall, if I recollect that correctly.
I think we're, we're trying to go more to main, main municipal standards and stuff as to what they're doing, and that's why I'm doing some of this, but I'm definitely addressing it over the whole time.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, Rick, and well, well, well said and well, well thought. I actually have the opposite reason. You, you're worried about the intent getting lost. I'm worried about the intent getting captured. I feel that sometimes the board circles the, circles the animal, but they never quite get there. And, and what my hope is, is that, you know, in a court, a court, who knows? A judge could look at it any, any which way, and certainly is not required to only look at the written decision. You can look at the video, they can shoot, they can look at the video if they want. But, but they oftentimes will first look to see if you did findings and conclusions, and again, ask any, any attorney in the state that represents the municipality. Almost every one of them is likely to say that the hardest thing for any board of appeals to do is to do the findings and the conclusions in a way that, you know, is adequate for an attorney or a judge to draw from that the legal basis for what they did. It's a hard thing to do on the fly here at the meeting, and the discussion is all good, and I don't mean to say that it isn't, and I don't mean to say that your questions aren't good or, or anything, but in actually coming up with, as you go down through each of the criteria, it's, the proper way would be to say, okay, so first, noting the fact, the applicant has owned this property since nineteen seventy-two. The property is in the RS, though. The property was built before, you know, you can state those things, and then from that, you can draw a conclusion, hopefully, that, that supports your vote, the way that you voted. the way that you voted. And it's a really hard thing to do. It's not easy for any board of appeals. It's not even easy for folks that work with it all the time and even lawyers. But where the, I talked to our town attorney, and he said that this really is the best... Not, it's not the only way. It's, it's a really good way to do it. And it's, we're not putting words in your mouth because we're relying on the audio and video record to draw that information out, as well as the application and the things that have been submitted in the application. So it's coming from all different sources to get on paper as a written decision. It's just really hard to do on the spot. We've been getting by with it. No question we've been getting by with it. But I think one of the reasons that the judge would go to the video is because he's not seeing anything on the written decision that tells him anything, you know, or her. So I think this helps that. They, they may do some fact checking. And that's why it's important for us to stay honest and true to what was said. And, and it's sometimes, I've got to be honest with you, I spent a long, you're right. It's, it's a commitment of time to do, to do that. Plus, I have to watch all of us on video, which is so painful. Except Leroy, he looks fantastic all the time. But, but it's so, sometimes it's very difficult to actually come up with anything from all of the back and forth. It's not even, it never quite gets there, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping to try to stay true and not just pull words out of thin air, but also hoping to try to capture the essence of what I think the board was actually getting at that makes sense in the context of the, the whole case. Because I'm sorry to ramble on, but it, I, I appreciate it. Again, as well as the change that with this written decision, on our attorney's advice, it's not necessary, nor is even all that common, that the whole board has to sign that written decision. The chairman can sign, just like he signs the letter that goes to the appellant. And just like he, he's the only one that signs the certificate of, I think, the certificate as well. The chairman's the only one that signed it. So if the board takes the vote, the record is there, we record the number of votes for it, the number of votes against. So it's all there. Plus, we know who was there because we take the attendance at the meeting. So it's not like you guys aren't important and you don't need to sign your name. But it just speeds up the process a little bit too. It makes it a little easier to gather those signatures in those cases where, I think we had to have some people come in and sign one time. It's really hard to round everybody up. Everybody's busy, so... For all of those reasons, and basically because our lawyer recommended it, that's the way. And I just thought it was a good time to do that at all. It coincided with the administrative repeal that we had earlier this year, the, the change in chairman. And again, nothing against former chairman. This just seemed like a good time to incorporate some of these changes where new blood, new way of doing things. And if, at any time, anything is not settling well with the board, your chairman is your voice and he gives us direction unless it's illegal, unless it's ill-founded, we would certainly go to whatever the board wants to do.
You're thinking he'd just change everything up for me. I think it's totally confusing as he could when I took over.
And my intent was not to change the decision that was made. I just wasn't here for the meeting. And I couldn't see in the notes where, what happened. So that's really why I just wanted to ask that question.
And I think we do have two sets now. Because what Mr. Ogdest is trying to do is we go through the meeting, is he's trying to write down what we've said. And he's got on his sheets where he's putting the findings of fact in there for us and conclusions. And Karen's also going back to the video and taking notes as well. So we have the notes, we have the video, we have what he's writing down as well. So we kind of have three different things now, which backs us up even more. Because we've got three different entities where we're actually seeing the stuff written, going back to video, the notes and everything, so, yeah. It just wanted to make it as confusing as he could for me.
And I'm gonna save this off, off of me. So you can't hear. I just know I blather on so much that it's gotta be difficult for me to have to figure out.
This is kind of my cheat sheet. I've made lines under each one, so I can jot down comments as they happen. And I can remember where the votes. And then if it's not, if it's a very simple one, we could use, we could use this. If it's a very uncomplicated one, but most of the time, or, or when it's not, I would prefer to go back and meet this up and type it out and have it at that for, for signature later. But the decision still stands the night that you're over. And that's, so the appellant walks away with a decision. And Karen sends out the requisite paperwork. This is just for the record, basically. Please keep your last appeal to, in your folders.
Just to follow what Brian said, you signed a copy, a page with lines on it, but you never saw what was put in there.
Right.
So this way, it gives you the opportunity to look in, like tonight Karen made an amendment. So you're now gonna see that, and then that also helps Brian and us. If the attorney does ask for it, we've captured it correctly. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts with this. And the minutes may be a little bit more limited because we have that and that is on file. Unless you guys want all of those every single time they answer the question, put in there. I think Brian and I kind of talked about how to try to capture them.
It's impossible to capture anymore.
Yeah.
So we just try to encapsulate what, what discussion is. Why are you not just covering the first?
And also, I think Leroy just said if you could keep your table item inside your block finer and the rest of it on top, I can, that way you can recycle it.
Just for, I guess, thanks to me. The owners is always on us to check it to make sure that it's accurate. But welcome, Melinda. I think you did awesome job tonight, so thanks, that was awesome.
Yeah, I second that.
Yes, I appreciate having a full board. It's, it's great to have every position filled, because there are times when people have to travel and do things that we need every body that we can get. One of the applicants came up to me after the meeting last month and said, he almost didn't do it because he saw four. And he knew it was a two-two tie and failed. But they stuck with it. It did pass with him. But that's the tough part, when you only have four people. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Or any other comments? Move to adjourn.
Sir?
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.